Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, or roll call places, Damon?
This is Wheeler.
Here.
Dr. Wagley.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Here.
Mr. Canwisher.
Here.
Mrs. Blatche.
Here. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move the board to prove the agenda is presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Canwisher, that this evening's agenda is approved and presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vision statement: It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but for, but in everything, not for some students, but for every student. Welcome to our guests this evening. If you would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. Anyone tonight? Alright, I will move to the board table. I'll start with you, Mrs. Rusker.
Yes, I have one thing this evening. I'm pleased to report that Pleasant Valley has been recognized by the Iowa Department of Education as, our high school, excuse me, as the, as a FAFSA School of Achievement for the 24-25 school year. This honor reflects our counselor's success in increasing FAFSA completion rates and helping students access financial aid and pursue education beyond high school. So the state rate for 2024-25 was fifty-four percent, and our local completion rate was fifty-eight percent, which is exciting. Kudos to our counselors.
Moving on to Mrs. McEwen, did you have anything to say?
I do. We received an email from KDCB, one of our teacher librarians, on Friday, hearing that nine hundred and one, A through twelve, students finished a summer reading program with Bettendorf and Leclerc Public Libraries. And last year was record-breaking eight hundred twenty-two, so we're almost a hundred over the record. So nine hundred one, all grade levels, that's pretty phenomenal.
That's very cool.
So, really shows love for reading.
That's a neat program. Thank you. Mrs. Wheeler, did you have anything? Alright, Mr. Ayers?
I have nothing.
Okay, Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes, I have something. One of our PV students represented our state and our region and our school at the Miss America Teen Competition in Florida last week. And out of all those that were there, her name is Fiona Triber, out of everyone that was there, she placed in top eleven, which was phenomenal, especially since she is a sophomore. And I believe the individual that won from South Carolina was a senior in high school, maybe even a freshman in college. So she was on the younger end, sort of placed in the top eleven. And also she was a semifinalist for her work that she did. She is passionate about bringing music to children, and so she set up library programs in our area, and that was presented, and she was awarded for that as well. And so I'm just really excited for her. She represented PV well, and it's great that she was able to contribute.
Great, thank you. Mr. Canwisher?
Nothing tonight.
Alright.
Nothing tonight.
Alright, Mr. Cleveland Smith?
I have nothing.
Okay. Mrs. Damon? Okay, Mr. Struse?
Nothing tonight.
Wow, this is very quick, okay, thank you everyone. Moving on to, moving, go ahead.
Again, you just reminded me that earlier, actually last week it was, we had a teacher at Forest Grove, we sent the message out to our families. Will Wiesner passed away at home in Clinton where he lived. Will was a second-year teacher with us, previous teacher in Clinton School District, he was an ELP teacher for us. So our thoughts and prayers go out to him and his family and his daughter Piper, who was a subpair for us last year as well. I think she's going to college at U and I to be a teacher, so wish her all the best, and again sympathies to their entire family.
Alright, thank you. Consent agenda, which tonight includes minutes and personnel. Are there any questions regarding this evening's consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move the board to prove the consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Kunkel to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, moving on to approval of bills, general fund.
I move the general fund warrants be issued, issued in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars and one cents, and payment of invoices presented.
Okay.
Motion by Director Canwisher, second by Director Wagley, that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nutrition fund.
I move the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and five cents, and payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Ayers, that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nutrition fund.
I move the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and five cents, and payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Ayers, that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Elementary Junior High Activity Fund.
I move that the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and seventeen cents, and payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? High School Activity Fund.
I move the High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents, and payment of invoices presented. Second.
Alright, motion awarded to Director Ayers. Second by Director Wagley, that High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Capital Projects Fund.
I move the Capital Projects Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents, and payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Canwisher, that Capital Project Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund.
I move the Pepel Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of a hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and ninety-two cents, and payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wagley, second by Director Ayers, that Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Internal Service Fund.
I move that Internal Service Fund warrant sixty-six, sixty-six, to sixty-six, sixty-seven, and ACH thirty-three, ten, thirty-three, eleven, be issued in the total amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents, and payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Canwisher, second by Director Kunkel, that Internal Service Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Trust Fund.
I move that Trust Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of three hundred and seven dollars and eighty cents, and payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Kunkel, that Trust Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, short, nice, the bills as well. Okay, and we have no old business this evening, so we will move into new business. Bettendorf Police Station Referendum, Mr. Struse.
Tonight we have four community members with us, we're gonna talk about the Police Department referendum. I think Dr. Spellog is going to start with the, kinda walk us through the referendum and kinda give us an idea of what this means for the community and the benefits it can have for us as a school district, so, Dr. Spellog.
Thanks Brian, and thank you everybody for your time this evening. I understand, we understand, as a committee, which I would like to begin by introducing, I'm joined this evening by Ann Kapler, Pat Eichenberry, and Jim Richardson. We're the chairs of the Say Yes to Public Safety Committee, which is the advocacy group to support passing a referendum the city of Bettendorf will have in front of the city on November fourth. And I really appreciate your indulgence, the PV Board of course is unique, that Bettendorf is only one of the communities that our district, are represented in our district. So, thank you for your time, knowing that this doesn't impact our entire community, but in a way it does, because, you know, safety is a responsibility that we all have. All of us individually, all of us corporately as communities. And what we're asking this evening is the opportunity to give you background, and then we wanna give you the opportunity to ask questions you might have of us, and then you have an opportunity on a resolution. So beginning with that, Heather, I'm not sure how to do this. Can you move to the next slide? There you go, thank you. These bullet points here underscore some important facts, but I can go through them quickly. The first just underscores that this is not a process that has just begun. The city has been studying this issue for a couple of years now. That has been guided by the Bray Architectural Firm, and in the studies, the staffing projections and stuff that they did, that determined that what is needed is a forty thousand square foot building, plus a fifteen thousand square foot garage that serves as, for the vehicles, and of course for the safe transfer of if somebody is coming in who has been arrested by the police. Now within that, I wanna emphasize, the current Bettendorf PD does not have a jail, nor does this one. It does not change that, alright? The current, which are, is actually the former City Hall in administration, and a five thousand square foot garage, which is a former maintenance garage, that is what comprises our current Bettendorf PD facility. It was built in nineteen fifty-nine, it is fifteen thousand square feet, fifteen thousand. It was last remodeled over a quarter century ago, and at that time there was a five thousand foot increase. And what the proposed building does, this forty thousand square foot new building with the garage, is it really, and this is a point we wanna emphasize, it accommodates modern policing. What we have been in is office space converted to police space. It is trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. It is, it is not designed for the level of safety, the level of operation, that a twenty-first century police department requires. In addition, it doesn't just accommodate current needs, this facility will accommodate growth for at least the next ten to twenty years. It wasn't the only option. There were, they first began by looking at current City Hall, moving the city administration. Not enough square footage, continued to try to fit a round peg into a square hole, and it left no room for expansion. They looked at the Genesis Building by the Y, off Devil's Glen, and by the time they looked at the cost of acquisition and the cost of remodeling, it far out seeded building the new facility, which is located, as we'll see here in a slide or two, next to the current Bettendorf Post Office. So we have our maintenance center, behind that you have the city maintenance center, in front of all that you have the post office, and next to that, north of that, you have land that the city owns. So this project would relocate the police department in, in that spot, which by the way, we will, we will get to, centralizes its location in what the city is today, not what it was in nineteen sixty, okay? Why now? Why do this now? Well, I, I, you know, it's hard for us, because I, we don't wanna, we are blessed with a safe city. But we need to keep a safe city, and I have long believed that infrastructure supports mission, supports function. And right now, our current police department does not adequately support function. So it is a safety issue. The new, the new location is, centralizes it. We'll see a map in terms of response time, or if you have to get a lot of people to a location in the city where it's, is the center part of the city now, far more response time than if, than the new location. It's particularly important to us and our, our colleagues in Bettendorf, in terms of much closer, much quicker response time on, if there were a major event in our schools. The preservation of critical evidence. I'm embarrassed to say I did not, I've never been through our police department in my career. Prior to doing this, I went through it, and I was shocked. And when I got to the research portion, I was appalled. Like I said, it is, evidence is received in an old maintenance center, like restroom, that's what the office is. And I thought to myself, some, some crime could happen to one of my children, and this is where the evidence is kept? It, it's astonishing. I would really encourage you, if you have questions, take advantage of one of the tours of, of the current facility. It improves safety and security requirements, it supports workflow, they're absolutely on top of each other right now, and it is not like people are knocking on the door now wanting to be police officers. That pool is diminishing. You want the best and the brightest, and right now, we're putting ourselves at a competitive disadvantage to attract and retain. We think this is an investment. Now, right out front, this, it does cost money, and we're very respectful of the fact that, like the school district, the money the city spends is your and ours hard-earned tax dollars. So we need to be very respectful of that, but we really believe this is an investment. And this is a problem that's not gonna go away. If we say no, the problem is still there, and alls we're going to do is push that cost higher and higher. It helps modernize our police force, it supports officer training. A key point here, I think it is our responsibility to provide for and to protect those who protect us. And right now, this facility does not do that. It does not do that. It's a responsible investment, and it is designed for future growth. Can I have the next slide here? Why a referendum? This is an oddity in the state law. The, every year, the city issues bonds to build roads, bridges, all sorts of, you know, sewer, things like that, things that are essential purpose. Well, a fire truck is an essential purpose, can be paid for under that bonding authority, but not the building to store a fire truck, or not a police department. So it can't be done under, I guess what I'd say, normal bonding authority, it does require a referendum. And that's part of why we are here, because a referendum is a big hill, it requires sixty percent approval, it's a supermajority. So this is one we all have to stand up and say, this is my part in public safety here, in the safety of our community. It is a cost of twenty-seven million, but it is an at-risk project. That means Estes Construction has assumed that if things go over that, it's out of their pocket, okay? So it is not going to be more than that twenty-seven million dollar figure. We talked about the three acres currently owned by the post office, we talked about Estes, we've talked about a dialed-in twenty-seven million. There was a community survey, if you're a Bettendorf resident, you receive, that was, we felt, or the city felt, I should say, got us close, felt like it was, gave a foothold to move forward with the referendum. And therefore, this team that was assembled, as a city, what they can do is provide information, they can't do advocacy, we wanna advocate. We wanna convince you as Bettendorf residents, and we want you as Bettendorf residents to be advocates, to get people to say yes to this important issue, which I said, as I said, is on the ballot on November fourth. Just some quick comparisons here. You can see, there's Bettendorf, fifteen thousand square feet, and how we and how we back up against our sister cities here in the Quad Cities. Now, let me say, we didn't put it up here, but just how the school district has our comparisons across the state. We can do that across the state for police departments, and you see the same story. It is the same story. Look at the difference there, where the population isn't varied by that much. This is that response time piece. It very much equalizes. It centralizes that. Our next one. This is just a, a rough look at what the building, you know, how it comes together and such like that. I mean, it, the, the shooting range that our officers have to train in and qualify in is a, in fact, they can't qualify in it. It's an old semi-trailer. It's a semi-trailer that they train in. So, I mean, it, it, it provides those kinds of training opportunities along with, with any number of other things that way. This is schematically what it looks like. We think, you know, that it fits in well with what's there now. Our building, the Post Office, the general commercial that runs along that corridor there, commercial slash office space. So, you know, we think it's well done. I mean, I, I think that the city has done a, a good job of being good fiduciaries. They have, I think if anything, you know, if you asked Pat if he was sitting up here, he would say, "Uh, I wonder if they've taken too much off the tree," you know, "in order to make sure that that dollar figure is, is a respectable one" as you balance that, the needs versus, you know, what the costs are. Now, there are tours. The next one is Wednesday night. We'll have a program to go through this information. It's at the Waterfront Convention Center. Starts at 5:00. The program will probably begin at about 5:15. That'll start with current Police Chief Doug Scott. And then will follow by us and opportunity to visit the current facility if, if that's something you're interested in. What did I miss there, team?
I think you hit our points.
So, that would leave it to questions that you might have of this project, of anything I presented here.
So, you had mentioned that this is probably going to be good for the next maybe 20 years or so. The way it's set up. Let's look in, if we look into the future, is there a room to expand in this area if we, if we needed to?
Yes.
Wouldn't have, a whole other building wouldn't have to be built somewhere else?
Yes.
In the back?
It's, is it?
Sort of towards the public orange civet, uh, facility.
Or you could go vertical if you needed to, correct?
I think it's on the, can you go back, Heather, to the, yeah?
Oh, there, oh, it says free to expansion there. I see that gray area. Okay. And you know how many, like, police cars do we have right now? You know how many that we do?
I don't know the exact number. It's-
All of them would be housed in that garage. Currently, right now, it's 12,000. Are all of the current police cars being housed in a garage in that 5,000 small place? No?
They're outside.
All outside.
They've been vandalized. That, a car, police car fully equipped's probably $75,000 to $100,000 and they're not protected. If, if, if there's a winter storm, they have to run out, clean off their cars. It's just not well suited.
They say in the winter, do they have to spend extra time, so there's some emergency you have to have?
Yes, sir, they do. They got a special-
In this situation, they'd all be in a garage. They could just respond immediately.
What are they going to do with the old building down where it's currently located?
It's going to revert back to office space. I don't know that there is, some of it, I think, will immediately be used by an Ann, Pat, Jim, Dylan. Immediately used by, you know, how the, how the city administration's kind of crammed in. I don't know if like, some elements of park and rec will move there. But here's, here's another thing. One piece that's, that, it doesn't just affect our, the police department. Currently, the police tactical vehicle is parked, has to be parked in one of the fire department bays down there. You know how it goes, city administration, police, fire. Well, the tactical vehicle takes one of the bays of the fire department, which means equipment the fire department needs to do their job is at, at a greater distance to them. So, the fire department will reclaim some as well.
During our recent floods, if, if the chief has to hold a meeting and start dispatching a large group of people, they can't do it in the police department. They have to move out a fire truck, gather everybody in a fire bay, and try to talk over whatever's going on and dispatch people. They have no meeting hearing at all.
On top, and just on the inefficiencies, a police officer to outfit before they go out, there, was there five, five different spots they have to go to? They have to go to one spot to get their weapons, they have to go to another spot to get their camera, they have to go to another spot to get, you know, whatever the stuff is they need. Again, just the inefficiencies of this have reached a point where it is detracting from mission.
Side note, I had a chance to meet with Chief Scott here a couple of weeks ago. And to go down there and meet with him, one was his office. Right next to his office was a conference room which he had to go through to get to his office. But next to the conference room is also the holding room or the questioning room right next to the conference room. And it's simply a sheet rock wall. So, you can literally hear whatever's happening in the room next door to what someone might be in the conference room. So, someone could be sitting on one side and they could be talking to someone on the other side with pertinent information that should be probably confidential and they're right there sitting next to each other basically, because you can hear through the wall. It is a cramped location. It is unbelievable how cramped they are and they're maximizing the space they have right now.
Brian, I would expand on that. There are only two interview rooms in the police department. So, if you think about an incident that might happen that involves multiple suspects or multiple students, they have two rooms to place people in and, and then they put people in the hall, because that's the only room that's available. It's very crowded, very cramped.
There's no restroom. If someone's under arrest and they have to use the restroom, they have to take them to the public restroom.
Which is right by a door.
I, just before, if there aren't any more questions, I just want to add, my great fear when I did was over on the other side of the table. One of them was that when it came to safety, this thought that it can never happen here. Such a dangerous thought. And that's what I fear in, 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 in our community, that, well, you know, things are fine. What do we need to do this for? That there, a complacency there, I think, is dangerous. And the last thing I, thing I fear is the idea that, you know, safety is someone else's job. Truly, it's all of our job, whether that's here in our schools or if it's in our community. We all have to stand up and play a part in safety. And in Bettendorf, on November 4th, it's an important opportunity for our citizens to, to, to do that.
On the financial side of things, since we're building a facility, fixed, single, if you will, when does the tax increase sunset then?
20 years. 20 years. And it doesn't go up. It can go down, but it doesn't go up. I had that right, right?
They were all shaking their heads.
You had said that the last renovation to the last police department was in 2000?
Yeah, it was about a quarter century ago, yeah.
Yeah. And so, why did they not, like, soundproof the walls or something at that point to make it more efficient?
I think at, at that point, 25 years ago, they were adding extra space. That was the focus of the addition. They put offices across the path. And then they reclaimed an office at the front to use for records. And if you come in for an accident report, that's where you go.
They got rid of the jail cells, too.
Yeah, they did.
They had two jail cells that they got rid of and repurposed.
So, the focus was just on the extra space. And I don't know if that was budget constraint. I'm not sure.
I think the walls that you're referring to, they were original walls. They weren't, they, they didn't tear them down and rebuild it.
In that meantime, do you know how many staff they have added, how many police officers they've added to their staff during that time as well?
They do not.
They know that has definitely increased.
Oh, yes.
For a lot the last few years.
I would add that, you know, there's now female officers that are part of the force. And they don't really have space for themselves. So, that's another negative in attracting a, uh, candidates for the police.
The interesting thing also is that even with this proposal that you have here, the, the total of square footage is about 40-something thousand, the new one, the new building total?
Yes.
Forty what, two?
Well, it's about 40.
It's 40 plus another 15,000 for the garage.
Okay. And can you go back again then? Okay. So, I mean, I don't know if the other, like, the Rockon, Mullen, Davenport include garages or not, but even with this proposal, it's still lower than, let's say, Rockon, which has a lower population than we do. So, what's, what's being proposed is still not even coming up to what other departments in our area have.
Doctor, at our first meeting, I, I asked the architect. I said, "You promised me this is enough space for, for the future." Because I felt like, as Dr. Spelhog said, you know, a lot of times they put all these ornaments on a tree and then they spend time taking it off to make it more cost-effective. And I was afraid they took too much away from it. But John Mann from Bray Architects, I, I think, made a pretty compelling case that we're where we need to be.
Does anybody have any, uh, any context on why in the law you have to have a referendum for a building, but you don't need it for a police car? Because that seems to be discrepancy here. When this is public safety, it shouldn't have to go through a referendum, especially when certain aspects of our safety don't need to.
I suspect the infrastructure portion of that probably got caught up in some municipalities somewhere, spending a lot of money on a golf course or, you know, something like that, that, you know, there, there was some, probably not good decisions. And so, the state comes in, and as happens with the state, I mean, good intentions with the law, but it is so heavy laden that it doesn't have the subtleties over time to address situations like this. And you, I mean, because you look at it and it is, it's absurd that that, but it, it is the reality of the law, so.
Do the Bettendorf Police also cover the Betplex area?
Yes.
Or is that county? Okay, so that would be Bettendorf.
Yes. Yes.
And that's really grown and brings in a lot more than our population per weekend.
Yeah.
This is our population over the weekends.
Just one statistic. I don't know if it's, uh, I, I found it, I, I met with our two last police chiefs. Phil Reddington, Keith Kimball, they've been chiefs for over three decades, their combined service. In Phil's time, which is two-thirds of that, there was one officer involved shooting. In Keith's time, which was one-third of that, there were three. And in Doug Scott's beginning month, there were two. And they weren't officer involved. They were officers shot. Usually could have been mortality. I mean, we don't only have a growing city, we have a changing city. We have got to situate our law enforcement officers in a spot where they can effectively discharge their duties.
I guess, you know, in, in that same context, from 2000, let's say, to now, do you guys have any context over how much busier the police department has come? Like I said, because our population's increasing, there's obviously more issues going on. Has it increased by 25%, 30%? Do you have any context of that number?
We, that was in the initial presentation and I don't recall what it was.
There's a longer presentation. We tried to condense it.
Sure.
Out of respect for your time tonight.
Steve, Steve Handig, one of the, the former Community Development Director for Bettendorf, asked that exact question and the chief sent me a stat sheet on it. And I probably still have it. I'd be happy to forward. But, um, this, this is all public information. It's transparent. Steve's a pretty tough nut to crack and he said, "This answer's on my questions." He's like, "I get it now," so.
I would also, before we read a resolution, I think I would say to Jim, Pat, Ann, and Jim, just thank you for your commitment to the city to make sure this, this word gets out to the public. Every meetings that you are holding, the tours you are holding, the lessons, the sessions you're having, just inform the community what this really looks like and the need that is there. So, and the safety it brings to our kids, that is huge. Really appreciate that, and our staff. So, thank you for thinking of us during this presentation.
Appreciate that. We made no mistake. We're not just informing, we're after yes votes. We want yes votes.
So, with that, I, I appreciate all of you coming tonight. I would encourage our residents to get familiar with this referendum. Can reach out to any of you for questions. And also tours, so you have, you have a couple tours coming up, right?
There's more, uh, public sessions. Uh, the next one is, like I say, Wednesday. I don't have a hand. You can use four.
Oh, okay. Is that one up there, Debbie?
Yeah, that one will take you to all the sessions.
Okay. So, uh, we can include that in our minutes for any-
And Brian, while I'm thinking of it, if you would be so kind, I would love the opportunity to visit with our relevant PTAs at their meetings in September, in October, if possible. If they would be willing to give me a little bit of time.
So, we really appreciate the information that you shared tonight. We definitely value safety within our schools and within our community. Our school resource officers have been amazing and our police departments have been great to work with. So, I'll share our resolution in support of, uh, public safety. Whereas the safety of the district's students, faculty, and staff is essential to support student learning. And whereas the district has a long and important partnership with Bettendorf Police Department in providing safety and security. And whereas the district is supportive of strategic efforts that increase public safety resources and reduces first responder response times in our community, now therefore be it resolved, the Pleasant Valley Community School District School Board reaffirms our valued partnership with the Bettendorf Police Department and their efforts to maintain and improve the safety of our community. Thank you very much. And we will move on to, um, more building discussion. Pleasant View Elementary Design and Development Presentation.
So, with us tonight, we have Anna back, along with Tom from FRK, to kind of walk us through, the last time they were here, we did the schematic design phase. Now, we are in the design development presentation phase. And recall, Anna and Tom have been here probably two times since that last discussion that we've had. We've walked around the building, sat down with various groups of individuals who will use this space to come forward with what you see today and kind of our next phase of the process. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Anna.
Yeah. Thanks, Brian, and thanks, everyone, for having us today. As you said, we're here to report on the design development phase of this project to elementary addition and renovation. So, as Brian said, we've been, uh, we've been back here twice and that actually ended up changing our schedule a tiny bit, but that's the next slide. Our team has stayed the same, where we're working with IMEAG here in the Quad Cities for our engineering services. But we've really started to engage the district by meeting- Um, but we've really started to engage, uh, the district by meeting directly with staff. Steve and Cotton, the principal over at PV, and Brian and Leland have been part of all these meetings as well. So the project's scope, um, is relatively the same as when we were last here. Um, I'll kind of go through overall, uh, elements of the project. The big thing being the addition to the building, which will be a new admin suite. Um, the goals of the admin suite were really to expand the nurse's office, create a new main entry off of where currently parent drop off is, um, and just improve and expand some of the spaces um, for administrative staff. We will be replacing, um, the flooring in the cafeteria. We'll be updating the fire detection system throughout the entire building, so that will, um, affect every classroom, every hallway. We will be, um, updating just the science classroom finishes of all the classrooms, that's the only one we'll be working in. Um, but it it's in need, definitely. Uh, and we met with, uh, your science teacher as well, and so he has led us in the right direction. Um, we, on here I say potential, but we will be, um, providing an alternate bid to this project to replace, um, some of the exterior metal paneling, some of it is original to the building. And some of your other facilities have done similar updates, um, so we'll be providing that as an alternate. Uh, it'll be at your discretion at the time of bid if we move forward with that. But that way we at least have a cost. One thing, two things that have changed since we were last here. Um, we decided to update the chiller to the building as part of this project. Leland informed us it's nearing the end of its life, um, I think he said it's around twenty five years old. So it's it's pushing it for a chiller and we thought with a project going on anyway, it would be simplest to add this in the construction. Um, the other will be the brick chimney, which is also original to the building. It used to be, um, how the building was heated. It's not used for anything anymore, except I've been told it's home to a bunch of bats. Um, we're gonna be taking this down, which will give us a bunch of wall space in the basement of the building. That will act as a space for electrical paneling for the new chiller. We'll be moving some electrical lines around because of the addition, extra power for the addition. So it's just giving us additional wall space. Looking at the project's schedule, like I said, um, this date today is actually the only one that's changed in this pro- in the overall schedule. We had originally planned to be at your last board meeting, um, but we wanted to sit down with some of the staff uh, before we presented on design development, to make sure we had their input on our design. And we did about a week and a half ago, and so we have pages and pages of notes to go off of. And the overall layout that we're showing today has some of the big elements covered, um, but we have plenty more to go off of. So for the overall project, some of the key dates to keep in mind, um, the next time we will be here is your October thirteenth board meeting. Um, at that point, we will be wrapped up with our documents. We will go out to bid, um, the following week on the twenty first. Um, we'll have around a month of bid period where the documents are public and anyone can take a look at them if they are interested in bidding the project. We will then bid on November twentieth. Um, none of that has changed since since schematic design. Bidding in November, um, the holidays start to get crazy as well as we're in winter. So what's probably gonna happen is when a contractor has been selected and approved by the board, um, we will start some of the behind the scenes work, which is the administrative paperwork side of things that we do. Um, getting contracts and bonds in place. We do, uh, we spend quite a bit of time looking at, um, products that contractors intend to use on the project, make sure they're in line with what we had designed. So actual work on the building probably wouldn't start until the following spring. We have around seventeen to eighteen month construction period. Um, the goal of that was to have two full summers of construction. Because of some of the elements of this project, we need, uh, time in the building without students. So part of this project will be interior renovations to the administrative suite as well as that science classroom. We need a place for the administrators to go while that renovation is going on. Um, we also can't have students during the science classroom renovation, so that will be during a summer. With some of the utility updates as well, it's an undetermined amount of time, but we will need to power down the building. Um, and so that will obviously also need to be during one of the summers. Any questions on the schedule?
We thought that, uh, Leland's request to replace a chiller would have a chilling impact on the budget. But, um, with the input that we received from the, um, staff people, from, uh, Mr. Cotton, um, we were able to be pretty efficient with the new addition, so the square footage of the new addition is a little bit smaller. Um, and, uh, so right now, we're we're pretty close to where we were at last time we presented the budget. We're about two hundred thousand dollars over, um, so part of that's a chiller, um, some electrical upgrades. Um, so I think we're we're looking pretty good on the budget side. Uh, we do have a two hundred thousand dollar contingency that, uh, we'll make sure that Leland feels comfortable with that before our next meeting. Um, and we also have some of the owner's soft costs, there won't be a whole lot of furnishings in this project. It will really just be office furnishings, um, so we're not out outfitting a lot of classrooms. So that number's a little bit less, a little bit less on information, um, technology, those kinds of things. Um, we will have some mid-American costs that the the district will bear, that'll be part of your soft costs. We'll we'll try to get a better number on that so that, um, by the next time we we come to you, the very bottom dollar, which is right now about three point nine million, we'll we'll try to dial that in, so we're as close as we possibly can. We feel that right now, we're in a very good bid climate, we're talking to contractors who are looking for work. Um, tempering that with, we're just not sure what the tariff situation might be and will that start to impact, um, supply chain procurement, those kinds of things. But I'm feeling pretty confident that we're a good spot right now, we we should probably see some good interest in some good bidding numbers in November.
So on this overall floor plan, the colored sections you can see are where we will be, uh, doing the work for this project. The only thing that's shown here is the cafeteria, um, which is just getting a new floor. Zooming in, um, to see this a little bit easier, this page here is mostly the new addition. Um, so the purple represents the new administrative office, um, as well as the nurse's office. This nurse's station is more than three times what she's currently working in, so, uh, this will be a big upgrade for her. Um, but this also acts as our, uh, controlled, uh, safe entry to the building. Um, anyone coming in through the front doors would be directed in, straight into the main office.
You know, looking at that space, just a couple of updates there, yes, the nurse's office is much sma- or much larger than what we currently have. If you've been in the nurse's office at Pleasant View, it is strictly just a straight in shot, very narrow and long. Um, the other thing, we do not currently, or should we have a space, but the mother's room that we have, they currently use the back room behind the stage and the cafeteria is where they go at this point. So this brings it to a location that is much more private, conducive, um, could also be a quiet space for other people if they wanted to. So those are two very large things in this area. I'd also add that currently in the building right now, our dean of students shares the office with the, her office is also the conference room. So anytime that she's in her office, she has to leave if there's a conference or we were dealing with a situation today and people want to come into the conference room, or we're trying to have a conference too. So, again, this just really starts to meet some of the needs that they have not had, is hence the reason why we're looking at this addition.
The bottom section's west facing, right?
Uh, south.
Oh, it's south.
Yeah, the new entry.
I'm trying to picture this.
So the best way to look at it would be right now, do you know where the patio is, behind Pleasant View? This basically sits on the patio, the corridor, then the orange that you see coming from the doors, the wall to the north of that is the brick cafeteria wall. So that is where this is sitting, so it's on the backside of the cafeteria.
Okay. The butterfly mural is right now, right?
Yes, on the backside of that wall.
On the other side of that wall.
Yes, yes.
So sun in the late spring, early fall won't heat the offices in that space is what I was wondering.
Yeah, so, uh, we've we talked about that with that concern in mind. All of the windows surrounding the perimeter of the admin suite will have permanent solar, uh, shades overhanging on the exterior. We also talked about adding an interior coiling shade in each space. That would be manual, um, but kind of preference of the user.
We have seen that in now where Leland High School, Forest Grove, Junior High, we've also added at Urbilite Heights too. You have all the similar shade in the in those windows.
So will the traffic flow still be the same? So like this festival would be from the parent drop off? And then the other festival would be at the circular?
Yeah, can you go back to to the next to the page before I'm in it? So that, it's would just walk in and just go straight through, right?
Yes.
But the area, so if you go just a little bit, I guess, the east. That is the right now where the current administration office is, right where they're, right there, correct? Where the principal is and the secretary and all that. So that, the new part is just really this per- this pink area.
Yes, yes.
That small segment.
Right, right. Everything colored is not all new addition, um, some of this is renovation.
Yeah, cause I was wondering what was happening to the, where the current, um, principal is, office and the current nursing and all that. That's all being converted now over to these other places.
Correct. Um, so let's talk about that. So the angled doors at the top of this plan, uh, are your current main entry. And that also feeds right into where your admin space is now. We're keeping the same footprint of that space, but taking out the interior walls and putting in new, just based on the feedback we received from the user. So we'll be putting in a changing room, um, this isn't showing it, but it'll have its own toilet and sink in there. Uh, the flex room, it needed a second door, the current door in there is too small by code. But that'll be set up almost as a classroom, um, with the same casework, marker boards, tack boards as all the other classrooms in the building and will just be used at the discretion of the curriculum. Storage is then for, uh, the administrative staff for all their file cabinets. We'll have some wall mounted equipment in there for some of their, um, electronics, walkie talkies, things like that. Um, moving south, the three orange spaces, these aren't changing too much to what, uh, is there currently. Guidance is changing the least. Um, we're expanding the workroom a little bit and putting in a new wall, um, partially, uh, for sound isolation, um, that's a problem over there right now. Um, and school-based therapy will now have a door off of the main corridor instead of, um, right now it's kind of tucked back around the kitchen.
So people will, and then the new entrance, which will be where the parents drop off. That'll be considered the front entrance or the main entrance.
Correct. So bus drop off will still come in through the side here.
Right. No one else will go through.
Right.
One of the things with the changing room, like what's the changing room for? We have two, uh, special ID programs located at Pleasant View. So a lot of times, there's a lot of students who might be wheelchair bound or might need changing purposes. So that room there is designed to take a wheelchair in there with adults or two adults to have a changing table and things of that nature. That's why that space is there, um, to help meet our needs of students programming.
The last space is the individual science room, uh, kind of in the northwest part of the building. So what you're seeing here is their existing layout. Um, there are two storage rooms off of the science room, um, and the work we'll be doing in here is mostly fit and finish type work. We'll be putting in new floors, ceilings, paint, um, all the casework, we're gonna be redoing with new lab casework that matches his curriculum better than what he's currently working with. We're not doing too much in the storage spaces, we're gonna take out some of the existing casework. So he can put in shelving that works better with how he's currently organizing all his equipment. Um, and he'll be adding a projector and projector screen as well.
This project is one that's actually been on our five-year plan, to actually do as a standalone project. So it makes sense when putting it into this project, get a better cost, it'll work out better. Uh, the reason why is because the casework in that room needs to be updated, um, over time. So time to get this one done. We were looking at about a year ago to do it, we decided to wait a year on this one.
So moving to the exterior, um, look up of the building, we are continuing to use the language of the existing building, so some of that natural stone. Um, and, uh, we'll we'll, uh, complement that with some metal panels. Um, you will see that that blue kind of banner that we, uh, have at the high school and at the junior high. Uh, we can put a PV on there or we can do whatever you'd like to on that, but that'll be kind of an announcement. Uh, we'll look at that being on both sides of that blade that projects, so as you're coming, uh, into that circular drop off um, from the north, you'll see that, as you swing around, you'll see it as well. But really want to call attention to where the front of the building is, it'll be reorienting your your public users of the building to where the new front is going to be toward the west, so we want to make sure that we accentuate that. A lot of ribbon glass, so mimics what you have now, the the administrators are very used to that. Um, and then you see those, uh, sunscreens as well for some of that sun protection. Um, so just a a a scaled down, it's a a beautiful mid-century modern organic modernism movement that was very popular in education and a lot of church, um, uh, design at that time. So we want to respect that, uh, architecture and, uh, make sure that that we have a delicate addition that that works well with that.
For example, being it's the front of the school instead of the PV, you'd probably say Pleasant View Elementary on there, like we kind of did some of our other elementary schools.
So as you're driving in, will, I mean, the the main entrance kind of is sunk in compared to how the gym sticks out? Is it gonna be, how how noticeable is it gonna be as you're driving into the school? The main entrance is.
We're kind of working with our civil engineer right now for how we soften that entry. Um, there is a grade change, we're we're not doing a whole lot to the parking lots, so we will have some steps that will go up. Currently, there's those steps that go to that terrace, and we would also need to have a handicap ramp. So they're still kind of fine tuning those designs, uh, but we'll have that for when we come the next time.
The alternative bid that we have put in, as Anna was saying, is for the panels around the entire building. So again, when you drive in, you might see the corrugated steel or wherever, right now that goes vertical. Um, and it can, we have some white, we have some gray, we have some red. That would take all that off and kind of blend, kind of blend it all together. I think when you drive in, you would see the bluer high piece plus the windows on top, which are clear story windows, which I think will help draw your attention to that area, um, so that's the main drop off location.
I think, uh, the district saw some nice success with the junior high where we were able to replace those panels. I think uh the district saw some nice success with the junior high where we were able to replace those panels and, and address that building up from the public perspective. Kind of same approach here.
The last part that kind of cleanses up too, if you drive, like if you went right back there right now, you'll see the overhead power lines coming right across the playground. So you've got power poles come all the way across that. With the electrical update, that, the, all those poles come down, the overhead lines come down, it go, everything goes underground. You don't have all those there anymore. So it really opens it up, so it looks nice and cleaner.
I kind of feel like there's also some natural seating out there right now with the ledge and stuff. Is, are we incorporating any of that in our um network or?
We have not. We, we might have some opportunities, I don't know, with the steps and, and maybe the handicap ramp. Um, but we really want to make sure that where your four square is, we have plenty of space out there. So there's probably not an opportunity to include some exterior seating. But that's a lovely space.
It is.
It really is.
By the flag pole?
Flag pole, and then there's also probably about six or seven large stones that circle around a tree that's right there. All that can be impacted as well. So we'll have to figure something out there.
This was the most logical place to put the addition with how the building works. So kind of a little bit of a sacrifice there.
It's not going to affect the new playgrounds that we put in.
I, I like the flow. I, I think the flow is natural and makes sense.
Those doors being locked and then you drive all the way around.
Picking the narrative too, um, the access to the outdoor playground on the south is gonna be much nicer now. And now you go through that weird little small hallway and it's just a single door.
I, this color scheme that you have, you know, you have it as that blue and gray, but the other part of it is red. Reddish color. So do you think that's, that's gonna be too much of a contrast when, when people look at it? Cause even if you look here, you can see that, that older area there is all red. So what, what's your thought on that?
I think it'll be a nice compliment. Um, we, we really want to use the, the, the brick or the um, the stone that is in that area, that it's part of the legacy for that part of the building. Um, and uh then I think that will, that's brick. We're not gonna find that brick, so trying to get a good mash would be difficult. With the, with all the aluminum glazing here, um, it made sense to have a little bit lighter look above it. So that's why above the windows, we're putting those metal panels. Rather, that would be the only place where you'd introduce bricks. But to continue with that stone and then the ribbon windows that they're used to now, introducing the other materiality on the, of the project, all that brick would be difficult.
I think the only sad feature of the whole piece is the current exterior wall. If you remember, it has that limestone block all the way up and down it. That will disappear because we have to put another wall in, cause it has to be a firewall between the old building and the new one. So it will be nice to put that stone on the exterior, cause we'll lose that one wall that kind of has a nice look right now.
What's going on with the roofing? I mean, I'm always worried now when we do these buildings that it's gonna impact other parts of the building and then cause leaking and things. Just wanna make sure you guys making sure that when this addition is there, that all the rain runoff is going, not going to impact the rest of the building where we're gonna get leaks in the ceiling.
We would love to bring you on a tour of the current roof. It is weird up there, so.
And we've seen, I mean, Kelly has seen, um, you know, direct issues with that.
Yes.
So that's why, that's kind of, I just wanna make sure that you know the issues we're having and making sure that this does not impact that and make it worse.
Yeah, we are, we are, we are very intentionally making sure that we correct some of the problems that are up there and tie things together. So for this area of the building, uh, we'll address that. The rest of the building, uh, is, is the roofing, the re-roofing needs come up, we'll certainly be happy to help. But at least for this area, we're addressing some really weird roofing things up there.
I believe the area where there was a leak last time was in the, in our new addition area. The last new addition that we had, in that, in that outpost on that area. That's where you saw the, right?
Yeah.
So that was a newer area and we had leaking. So this is a new area, just wanna make sure that doesn't happen.
Well, well, we'll do our level best on the design side. Um, we're not roofers, so we won't be out there pounding nails. But we, we do watch over the project and monitor that. So we'll, we'll do our level best to make sure that what we see happening on the job site.
Clarification on that leaking in that newer, uh, newer section, that was a down spot indoor, correct?
That was inside drain. It wa- wasn't actually the roof.
Okay.
Rain was connected to the roof.
Okay. Which has not been fixed.
It has now been fixed, yes.
No issues since then?
Not that I know of.
I do like the natural light too, that, yeah, from the top. That's, that'll be nice. That common area is kind of a staple of Pleasant View. It's nice to have that area there. Nice. Any other questions? Tom and Anna?
Sorry, thank you.
We appreciate you being here tonight and calling it a night. Um, if there are no other questions, I will take a motion.
Please board, please, design development process for Pleasant View Elementary School.
Second.
Motion by Director Canwisher, second by Director Wogley, that the board approve the design development process for Pleasant View Elementary School. We'll call both, please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Director Wogley.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
And Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Um, moving on to our last item of new business. Thank you, Tom and Anna.
State of the house on that.
Thanks, Lena.
Thanks, Lena. All right, moving on to uh the twenty twenty-five summer school report.
Um, I'm just sending the copy around. I know everybody had this in their board packet. Jill and I are just gonna talk through it really fa- really quickly. It's really laid out nicely. Missy put it together um, from the spreadsheet that I believe you probably all had. So just looking at the front, um, for the board report, we had a, in the K five program, we had hundred and fifty-one students. Which is exactly the same number as last year, um, which is kind of weird. And the PV junior high had nineteen. Um, just a couple of things to point out that when I look at this, obviously I wasn't a part of the board report or anything. I look at that really low student to teacher ratio and really having a variety of teachers that are involved. It's not only classroom teachers. Um, so I think that that's really a great thing at the elementary level. And then having the same very small ratio with students at the junior high. Uh, the criteria is the same across the board. And then um the curricular focus and design, just having the small classes, like I said, about core reading and math, and then the um intervention, having that as a part of it too. So that's, that's really, that's the information on that. Jill was gonna share some of the attendance information, which is on the back.
And I think you can all, I apologize for being late. I had gone to Will's visitation and it was very, very crowded. So um, that is a good thing, right? Always a good thing. So on the back, um, you can just see that since uh twenty twenty-one, our total enrollment um decreased a little bit, but that is a good thing because we were being very intentional, like we mentioned, about honing in on the focus and the qualifications for um summer school attendance. I think um something to note, especially with the, well, with um the junior high and the K five is just our rates of um students being absent has um gotten better and better every year. So um, things just are, are going really pretty smoothly. You can see that our budget has um improved as we've moved along as well. So you guys have any questions or?
Why do you think such a wonderful um increase, or I s- I should say decrease in absentees?
I think, I mean, honestly, I think um it's my understanding prior to the, my time in the district that maybe it was held at a different time. Is that correct, Brian? Was it held at a different point during the summer?
It was held at a different point. We also had a longer period of time. It used to be fifteen or fourteen days and now we do ten days.
Yep. In the last few years, we've really targeted at ten days and I think that's been powerful.
That's great to see.
Yeah, is it a pretty high opt-in, right? Like for the majority of the kids who get the opportunity to go, they would say yes and wanna do it? Cause they know you can just go if you.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. If we had data that showed who opted out, I think.
Just generally, it wasn't, you don't have to give me the information.
I do think most who qualify do end up coming. I mean, the vacations and things like that that are pre-planned. It's always an impact, but I don't think it impacts a high percentage of.
Missy, you have the numbers, but we usually do a very, the people who are selected, most of them, we also have a waiting list of families who will ask if their children can come also.
Okay.
So we've seen a few of those as well.
We have also been holding our um extended school year um services the last couple of years in conjunction with um what's going on at Hopewell. Just because um prior, we were holding separate, like programming happening at separate buildings across the district. And if you really think about safety and things like that, um, we really need the building to be staffed with administration, office staff. And then um some of our students that do qualify through their IEP for those extended school year services have um high medical needs. So we ha- already have a nurse on staff at Hopewell, so that is why we're offering that program. Um. And it has to be individualized for every student, but we do ask our IEP teams to look at those two weeks to really offer those services. So we can have the staff available at Hopewell. And that's gone really well too. Um, students are, are welcomed into the specials and um, I know like Mr. Nelson from Pleasant View, the music teacher, is always really, really excited about bringing all of those students into music during the ten days as well. So that's worked very well.
You know, I have no data support, but thinking about the attendance, I wonder, um, with the new family week where we cannot schedule anything. So we are scheduling summer school two weeks prior to that, so it leads into that. So maybe that is also a reason why maybe families are sending their children to summer school and not taking a vacation, cause they have the family week that last week of July, first week into August.
It is nice to have that week.
It is. It, it, it has been a benefit for so many reasons across the district, from sports to kids and programming. It's like, go have a week with your family. We will not interrupt you. Can't anything.
I think we should, um, we can get more information out, especially to elementary families that we have that need. So that they kind of, I don't know if there's something we can do to kind of spread the word a little bit more.
Try to plan that time, so you don't accidentally plan.
Yeah, I've talked to a lot of elementary families that weren't aware of it, you know, so.
Okay.
Yeah, cause if you're not, if you don't have a high school athlete.
Is that okay?
But of course. We see what we're looking for.
Yeah.
My daughter is a little extra. I think advertising, if kind of PV know about it, like dance, cheer and basketball, and they don't, they don't have practices those nights. They like coordinate with PV to give us that week off, which is very cool.
That is great.
Yeah, I think it's important to advertise, and advertise as family week, because I were, it was, some people asked me the question about when is dead week? They call it dead week. And I was like, what are you talking about?
That was the original term they used when they rolled it out a few years ago. It's dead week. Uh, they may still call it dead week, but to me, I'm like.
Dead week.
It's called family week.
But, you know, I like your family week better. And the other thing, and I, um, Lee, and maybe you can give some context. So I'm, I'm just looking at the budget. We had the same amount of, we had a hundred and seventy students this year, a hundred and sixty-six students last year. Yet the cost is actually about three thousand, lower, it's close to four thousand dollar difference, actually cheaper. So there are more students, but it costs less, correct?
It may have been, it could be staffing. I mean, like, that would be my. That's what I was gonna say. We've gotten tighter, sorry to interrupt that. And uh, one of the things that has happened is um, is the amount of, I think, prior, there was just a lot of like, oh, this kid might benefit from a para. And as I've explained before, we need to go through a very intentional process of adding adults. So I do know we've moved from, um, and I am not bragging on myself at all at this point. But when I first came, that was one of the things Tony and I looked at. And we went from like thirty para educators to, I would think, in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. We have like only ten para educators, because we don't need thirty para educators at summer school. So that's some of the cost.
That's, that's what I was thinking.
I think the focus too on the curricula they designed a few years back, like I think instead of everyone just doing their own thing, like that very much was tightened up too with the teacher's voice at the table. And they made some decisions that, um, I just, it just tightened this, the curriculum and what they were all using and what they purchased. That may have been an impact too.
And, you know, it's, it's basically ten days or two weeks that this is going on. And I always wondered, so in that two weeks, is two weeks all a lot of these students need to just get them back up to that level? Um, where they can start school at a, at a all higher level? Or have you guys ever thought about having it be more than two weeks?
That's a really good question. I, when I think about, and this was all set before I was here. But, you know, having students who are not proficient on ISAS for reading or math and then using some other data too. Like, these are the kids that really just need a little bit. Like, they just, it's like the preventing slubber, summer slide. It's like a little bit more prevention. They're not our students with IEPs that have ESY. They're our students who just need that, you know, being out of school for that amount of time could really hurt them. And having this bump right before school starts or closer to when school starts is, is helping that, yeah. I don't know, I would need to look at the data and say like, which one hundred and fifty-one students were at summer school? And what does, like, what do their fall scores look like?
Right.
We could definitely do that. I haven't done that yet.
Lee is spot on. That's exactly, we used, we've had conversations about having summer school right when school gets out. But our design was to help them get ready. It's the boost before school begins. So we've always held it as late as we possibly can in the summer.
And so many other camps and all of those things, so many of those things are in June that kids go to for, you know, one million other things. And so those couple of weeks before family week in July, there's never a good time, there's never a perfect time, but maybe we can get more during those. When we looked at August, really, I mean, you, I mean, things kick off in Iowa, August first for teachers, administrators. And I, I just don't think we'd find the, the teachers, you know what I mean? People are coming back. We do such a great job with our new teacher orientation and that just starts early. So we really are pushed back as late as I think we can go.
So any aha things that you saw this summer that you want to change or incorporate for next summer? Anything that jumped out?
I would love to sit down with the teachers that, that taught. And um, I haven't talked with the principals in depth about it, but just to get some feedback from them. What went well? What are some ideas they might have to, for improvement? Cause obviously we should always continue to look at.
Ideas.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and a big thank you to all the teachers that gave their time.
One thing we may consider in the future, we used to hold it at Riverdale Heights for a long period of time. The Riverdale Heights, we had some construction go there once, so we moved it to Hopewell, and it's just kind of stayed at Hopewell now. So we will see if we rotate between some of our schools in the future. I know principals would like to.
I just want to mention the work that Missy Huff does behind the scenes to get this all set up is phenomenal. Also Dawn Tagg on with the um extended school year services. She, she organized all that and her and Missy um through the hiring and all that. So those pieces, um, we couldn't have done all that without them. They just do a lot of the work behind the scenes. And, and the teachers as well, the parent. Just echo that about Missy. I started, you know, July first and I kept saying like, do I need to do anything? What do I need to do? She's like, I got it. Okay. So she, and she did. Yeah, absolutely.
That's great. All right, uh, any other questions? All right, I'll take a motion.
And move the board, accept the twenty twenty-five summer school report as presented.
Uh, motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Kunkel, that the board accept the twenty twenty-five summer school report as presented.
Roll call vote, please. Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Director Wogley?
Yes.
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 Future dates, our next meeting will be September twenty-second at six PM. And then the following meeting will be on October thirteenth at regular board.